I got to talk about the Chinese straddle bus, so I thought that was more like fun than it was.
Well, I remember the, the very first, um, hearing I came to. And I was like, I'm just gonna resign.
Well, you're gonna, okay, I think we're ready to go.
They'll be happy to know I told my LES contact out there that they need to build a bike locker at their thing.
Jerry, you want to call the next speaker, please?
The bike locker.
Okay, um, under special public hearing and administrative action, item six point one of fiscal year two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty, transportation improvement program, where the Lincoln Metropolitan Planning Organization's staff recommendation is general conformance with the long-range transportation plan as amended. Are there any exporté communications to be disclosed on this agenda item?
I see none. Mike?
How fast can you talk, Mike?
I don't know. How else to clear out a room better than talk about the TIP? Uh, the, uh, the TIP is an MPO document that we bring forward every year. I know the CPA, CIP is every other year. TIP comes forward every year to coordinate with state and other agency project programming. And the, uh, document is fiscal constrained and the focus is federal funding or projects of significant size that need to be coordinated. Uh, there, we also include locally funded projects for coordination. Uh, there's a little more flexibility in locally funded. Federal funding, we need to tie down, uh, for, um, for programming purposes for the state and federal highway administration and federal transit administration. But all the projects, that is the major system improvements, are identified in the long-range transportation plan. There are rehab projects that are not called out specifically, but they are programmed as a, as, as group projects within the LRTP as well. So you'll find not just major improvements, but also rehab and safety and maintenance projects. Uh, as I said, it's a four-year document, but the CIP is a six-year document. Uh, the county one and six, we coordinate with that. That's also a six-year document. The, uh, state, uh, Department of Roads brings forward a, uh, project program every year. So there's a little more flexible on their side, not on our side. And we coordinate with all these major, all the major transportation agencies for projects that they're bringing forward and any agency that will be using federal funds. That includes, uh, organizations like the Lower Platte South NRD, um, city, the city of Hickman has a project in there. So the smaller communities also include projects in the TIP as well. It's before the planning commission for public review and, uh, we're asking that you review this for conformity with the long-range transportation plan. I know we have had some, um, uh, comments. I think you have all the comments. We have five different comments on transportation specifically. There might be more. I'm not sure of that. Um, but there's five I know about. Uh, the planning commission, we're asking the planning commission to review the TIP for conformity and we forward that conformity onto the MPO technical advisory committee. And once they consider all your comments and the public comments, they will act to develop a final TIP that's forwarded to the, uh, officials committee. That's the policy oversight committee that actually takes action for the MPO. And once they take action, they forward it to the state to be included in the state TIP and confirm, confirmation by the federal highway administration. Once that's done, the, uh, the, uh, new TIP replaces the old one, becomes functional on October one every year. That's basically the federal fiscal year begins on October one. Uh, as Jerry stated, we're, we recommend conformity. We feel that the projects, uh, in the, in the TIP are conformance with the LRTP in, um, in their, um, in their scope as well as their programming year. And I'm open for questions. Questions?
I have one. And maybe this isn't the right time to address it, but can you walk me through what's going on with the A Street project? Because earlier West Day, um, because earlier when we were looking at our briefing, the section of West Day that I thought was at issue was highlighted as blue as an already programmed project. So I'm wondering what the concern was from the neighbors about that not happening, programs and can...
Yes, I think the neighbors wanted to move a little quicker through the process than it did. Um, actually there's, we've, uh, we've been toying with the funding and the scope, not, not the scope, but the staging of the, the engineering or the design of the project and how that project could be phas- phased and, uh, the year of construction. And the, uh, and we started working on that actually a couple of years ago. But the, in the current TIP, we show that the study to begin in fiscal year eighteen nineteen with right-of-way in nineteen twenty and then in the fifth year, construction would begin.
And is it, is it correct that that was in the last TIP? That was slated for an earlier timeframe?
Um, it, in the, in the last, in the, the last, the current TIP, uh, they, it was programmed a little differently. It was showing, uh, design in seventeen eighteen, so, um, that would be a year earlier. Actually, we will be beginning that contracting of that in seventeen eighteen. It's just not called out. It's something that we can't address. And then didn't have specifics on right-of-way or year of construction. Um, I think that they're, what the current TIP says is eighteen nineteen. But really for programming issues and, and, and how the, uh, the projects have developed, other projects in the TIP have developed, it is slated for construction on, in the fifth year.
So we recently had, um, a proposed development come through before us out on West Day. You probably know about this. And then I believe, I may be wrong, um, but I believe that, uh, city council actually put that development project on hold because specifically of the concern with the West Day Road. Does a situation like that impact how we then prioritize that project in the TIP? Like if that, if we're putting development on hold because a road can't handle it, does that bump it up higher in the priority list?
Uh, just for a piece of clarification on that in particular, David Carey with the planning department. The city council actually approved the project. They didn't approve the full build-out of the project. So they effectively approved the phasing of the project.
All right.
And they said that the second phasing, which was an additional hundred and fifty units, I believe, couldn't happen until the improvement to the, to the West Day Street occurred. Um, and then the applicant agreed with that condition.
And so I guess my question is still the same, but thank you for the clarification. When, when we have a situation where development is sort of on hold, um, pending completion of a road project, I didn't know if that gets factored into the prioritization. Is that one of the things you guys look at as you're prioritizing?
That, that's part of it, but I think it's more of how quickly we can program and actually go to construction on a project. Uh, one of the issues, uh, along this corridor would be right-of-way. If they went to dedicate right-of-way, it'd go a little quicker and make the project a little cheaper. So there's other, many factors that go into a complex project like the West Day project.
I did tell you, Mike, the, the, the other question you had was the, the blue lines and when we got a briefing on this. That was an indication that this project, as we discussed, the update of the long-range transportation plan, this project is being considered a committed project, which gives it a status that quite, you know, honestly, this project has never had that status before.
But it's committed but not funded yet or not?
It's not fully funded, but it's committed in the sense of that it's the, it, there's a handful of projects that are going to get that status in this update of the LRTP. And the reason for it is that it actually has the funding being pulled together in its entirety now, uh, within the near term. And I would just point out one more point to that, uh, on the Elmo, um, just to give it, hopefully some clarification. Um, this is the priority list of, in the LRTP, which is really the kind of...
Yeah, right, David. You're gonna have to stand in. It's almost seven o'clock.
It didn't work too well. Oh, yeah, paper.
Zoom in, zoom in.
We still need to zoom in.
Zoom in, my friend.
Tenure Mazda.
That's brightness. You used to do this, remember?
You could zoom in a little farther.
This is, this is really just to point out that...
Oh, thank you.
This project, as highlighted here, um, shows up in the current adopted LRTP in twenty nineteen, um, which enro- and effectively is kind of where this is starting to show up in the TIP and then the CIP as well. And then the second part of the project, which is West Day down here, Cottington to Folsom, in the current TIP is in twenty twenty-five.
So actually that's moving ahead.
So when we, when we take action today on the TIP, we're really focused on what the LRTP says about the projects or the, or the type of project that is in the TIP. So it's a point of clarification on that.
So it, it's actually moving up in priority. It's not being pushed back?
Now, yeah, correct. Now, I, understanding that this project has been shown in pieces and parts for many years in the TIP, not necessarily the TIP, but the CIP. And so that's part, that's really the source of the discussion, of the discussion. So I acknowledge that that's part of what's being questioned.
Okay.
Can you say again what you said about the right-of-ways? Like if, if they... If they dedicated them sooner, that the whole project would happen sooner? I kind of didn't get all of it there.
It helps the project move quicker if they're, if they're right, if we do not have to spend a year negotiating for right-of-way. And if there are issues with, with the, uh, gaining the right-of-way for the project, uh, then it would slow it down. I don't expect us to have any issues here. It's just a matter of, uh, expense, I would think.
And you said the right-of-ways, they're, that was the first, um, that was the two thousand eighteen, nineteen that they were scheduled to start acquiring those.
As, the, the way it's programmed now is the, uh, the project design, which I think is going to start at the end of twenty eighteen and, but the, and the majority of the design work will be done in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. That's how it's programmed. With the right-of-way, once you get the designs, you know how much right-of-way you need. And that would be, uh, negotiated the following year with construction to begin in the fifth year, which would be twenty twenty-one.
Now, I was also looking, um, under the Safety and Operation Improvement Program. One of the intersections underneath there is Cottington and West, oh, I guess that's not West Day. Sorry. Never mind. Read it wrong.
So Mike, wins the South Beltway is supposed to be... Darned.
Actually, we're working on it now. The state is the lead agent. Uh, the city is providing funds towards that project. Uh, the state is going through environmental review and design right now. So, uh, it'll be ready for construction to begin, uh, while we hope in twenty twenty.
There's any way to move that up or that state and...
Well, once we have to get through environmental review and get the federal highway administration to sign off on it, once they sign off on it, uh, the right-of-way can be purchased and the design's completed and then construction begins after that. So it, it's on track according to the Build Nebraska Act. We, we don't see any problems with that.
Anyone else? Thanks very much.
Sure.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item?
Good evening. My name is Kobe Mack. I'm appearing on behalf of the Lincoln Independent Business Association, Leba. And Mr. Chairman, I'll ask for clarification. You asked for those who are in support. I actually have some support and a little bit of opposition as well. Um, and so I'll ask for clarification is, it, it's a sixty-six-page report and we're, I guess, favoring most of it. Where would you prefer that I testify?
You're welcome to testify now and you can show, show us where you support and where you oppose.
Very good. I want to offer a few thoughts on, on the TIP program. Um, let me first begin by commending our, our city officials for including the South Beltway uh, and, and continuing discussions as well on East Beltway projects. These are major infrastructure investments that are pivotal for sustainability as well as for safety, for growth of our transportation infrastructure and of, of course, uh, the future economic development that comes along with them as well. Leba applauds the city officials for their continued efforts to prioritize and fund, uh, these vital projects. There are certain projects Leba has a few reservations about, particularly when considering the funding sources identified and the extent of the city's investment in these projects. First, the inclusion of the multimodal center in the Startran portion of the TIP and CIP. Uh, gives us reason to pause. It's a twenty-five million dollar project tied directly to the approval of a, uh, major federal grant that would only fund nineteen million dollars of the project. The six million dollars in funding from the city's portion of the project is to be financed with interest through COP bonds. There are certificates of participation. Leba and the Lincoln Journal Star have report repeatedly voiced over the course of the last year concerns about the continued use of this financial tool that we have referred to as a credit card that does not have any limit to it. Uh, we believe moving forward with this plan for a multimodal center by relying on the need for COP bonding is irresponsible in the interests of Lincoln taxpayers. We've been working with, uh, city officials to kind of get a better of, understanding of the extent of some of the other projects included in the TIP. Uh, again, it's a sixty-six-page document. Most of the things in there are, are very appropriate, need to be done, need to move forward. Um, if we do find any other issues as we work with the city, uh, we'll bring those forward to you as well as the city council members moving forward. So, uh, that's it. We just wanted to comment on, on a couple of those projects and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Mack?
Um, sure. I've, e- explain the objection to the COP bonds.
In two thousand one, um, the city of Lincoln, well, historically, we had been using COP bonds to purchase things like streetlights. Um, they are backed by the item itself. So should the city default, the person or people that have supplied those bonds can come and take our streetlights. Now, in recent years, we've been using them for sidewalks as well, although I think repossessing sidewalk would probably be a pretty difficult thing. But in two thousand one, we had roughly one point four million dollars in debt from COP bonding. Uh, fast forward to today and we're up to forty-two million dollars in debt with certificates of participation. This is all done without a vote of the people. Um, the Experian building purchase was something we objected, uh, but that was, uh, purchased using COP bonding. We felt that should have gone to a vote of the people and the people should have a say when we're doing extensive bonding like this. So our debt now is now forty-two million dollars. And every year, the city now is having to come up with over eight hundred thousand dollars just to make the interest payment. That does not include the principal, just eight hundred thousand dollars in interest. And, and so we would like to see the city to continue to use COP bonding, but to reserve it, um, and, and, and to lower our debt on that. So what we're asking and what I think the Lincoln Journal Star has opined on as well is it's time to put the brakes on, on this type of bonding.
So your objection is not necessarily to the project, just the funding source? So if it was like a publicly voted and approved bond, that would be different?
Today, our objection is the funding source.
What funding source would you prefer we use?
I think that, uh, that's a discussion we have community-wide. And, you know, if we need to come up with six million dollars for a project like that, then, uh, probably putting it to a vote of the people would be the right answer.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do we have questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
He's waited this long. Don't let him testify.
You cut off, sorry.
Mark Antenson, fifteen twenty-one Southwest Thirty-first Street. I'm here to ask for an extended home occupancy. No, just... My opposition is really around the West Day project. I thank everybody for, uh, bringing that up already as a discussion point. Uh, I do disagree with some of the characterizations that staff has made regarding, uh, the exact delay of that project. My ask for you guys is to really direct planning to restore, uh, the West Day project back to where it was in the previously approved TIP and CIP. So I want to clarify, I'm not asking anyone tonight to move that project up in priority or timeline, but merely to stand by the CIP and TIP as it was previously approved in phasing and funding. So a couple of things on that, just to keep in mind, this project's been on the CIP since at least two thousand four. I can't prove earlier than that, but I, I can at least track it back to two thousand four. Uh, for those of us who have been here for five, six hours and can't remember how long two thousand four was, the final episode of Friends aired, uh, Facebook was launched, uh, and we're still three years away from the new iPhone release. As Director Carey has noted before, the CIP is traditionally thought of as a good thing for a project to be included on. Uh, although that certainly seems to be hard to say with a straight face when it is continually pushed back whenever it gets within two years of starting, uh, which is when, as you know, the CIP dollars would actually be committed to starting the project. And my question, I, I would really love staff to answer if they're able to or if not able to perhaps follow up is, I'd like to know when this was first included on the CIP. You know, what's the last year this wasn't in our list of projects to be completed? Uh, I would like to share a document that, uh, staff has prepared and distributed for the West Day neighbors that does talk about, uh, some of the facts around this project. Uh, I would like to point out here that, um, if you look specifically at the CIP funding, you can see here a comparison of the twenty fourteen sixteen CIP against the proposed sixteen eighteen and...
Please zoom in on that a little bit.
Absolutely. So as you can see here, I disagree with the characterization that it's not being delayed further. It certainly looks like dollars were, significantly more dollars were committed in earlier years than what the revised CIP is showing. Uh, so I don't know how to read this, uh, except to see that it is yet again being delayed in this proposed program. Uh, I won't go into extensive reasons why West Day Street needs to be improved. I think we all understand that. Uh, what I am really asking for here is just that this commit, that this commission made good on the promise that was made in so many CIPs previously. Uh, the reasoning I heard from staff on why this needed to be pushed back is that they weren't ready to start on it this quickly and that they needed more time. And I guess my answer to, my response to that would be, uh, what is the point of these planning documents if when we go to try to execute on the plans that we've approved, we realize that they're not feasible? I thought this whole vetting process was to ensure that, uh, it was very much possible for, barring unforeseen circumstances, uh, for the city to begin on these projects as the plan was laid out. But now I'm hearing that what certainly seemed to be foreseeable issues, uh, are being used as reasoning for pushing it further back in time. Uh, with that, I'm sure you may be asking why there aren't more of us out here. I'm the only one foolish or crazy enough to stick around for this whole meeting, but I certainly, uh, will offer that it's far more than just me that's frustrated. I hope you guys have heard from several of the other neighbors. Uh, I know Public Works and Planning has heard from it every time they've attended a public meeting, uh, in our, in our jurisdictions of seventy-seven to Southwest Forty-first, West Van Dorn to West O Street. Um, and in summary, I would just really ask that this commission look hard at why this project needs to be delayed, uh, yet again, despite the continued frustrations of the residents, uh, the developers, and I think you even heard that from the city council back in March. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Mike, you want to come back and answer? Mike, do you want to address some of the things you talked about?
I'm not sure what he, the document, was that, is that the current CIP? Or is that for, is two thousand four's, is prior to their current planning document, which was adopted in twenty eleven? So I'm, I can't address two thousand four because I don't have that material before me.
So Mike, if we have a project that was included back in two thousand four and has been bumped for a few years, um, what, can you just tell us a little bit about the process of, you know, how do we decide what goes forward and what gets moved down the line?
Well, for one thing, I'm not sure of the scope of the project we talked about in two thousand four. I do realize that, I do know that there were not, um, there was not a, uh, a multi-family complex being built or proposed at that time. So circumstances, I'm sure, were different. Uh, I do know that we wanted to move ahead on that project to tie in with the Southwest Forty-first Street overpass over the railroad tracks. Uh, I can't say that that was what delayed it, but it, it is definitely a reason for it not to move forward quicker. Uh, but there's also other projects that, uh, we have programmed and I can't say that this, they, they were priorities, but we do have, we were working from and have been working from the priorities set in the current long-range transportation plan that was adopted in twenty eleven.
As we're looking at our priorities, um, do we take into account things like, you know, this, I know some of the letters we've gotten have talked about the size of the school that's out there and the, the safety of kids trained to get down there and what happens during a flood? I was, are all those things considered as we're looking at scheduling or is it more really about can we get it done in a timely fashion?
We did rebuild Cottington for that reason and it's a complete rebuild, uh, a number of years ago. And I, I think that was the focus at that time. I would have to go back and, and find, and research to see why the West Day project as, uh, gentlemen defined it was not advanced. But I do know that we've been maintaining, uh, West Day Street that would be to the east of Cottington. That's, so the current project that we're talking about has two parts, east of Cottington and west of Cottington. The western segment is, uh, focused quite a bit on the development that has taken place over the recent years. The eastern segment needs to be completely reconstructed. It's, it's, um, it's losing its integrity and we're trying to get to it as quickly as we can because our, that, that street needs to be reconstructed. So basically, we're calling it one project, but it, there's two major pieces to it. So I'm, I can't, uh, I could follow up if you'd like on, uh, what, what commitments were made in two thousand four, but I'm not aware of those right now.
I'd say you may want to have them for when you go before council because I bet that issue will come up again.
We will look at that.
Other questions? Mike, as far as the COP bonds, is that normal to not have a vote of the people with, with those, the COP bonds?
Um, that's out of my purview, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's something, it's a tool that the administration uses.
Funding source that, that the administration uses? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, entertain a motion.
Move a finding of conformance?
Second discussion. Well, we've had, uh, briefings on this and we understand its purpose as a fiscally constrained instrument, uh, and a planning document. We also will be looking at the LRTP in the future, which is a separate document and, and has a different set of constraints. Our role here is pretty...
Our role here is pretty narrowly specified and I think within the bounds of that role, we, I'm, I find that the contents of the TIP are in conformance.
I do just want to address the West Day issue. I do feel like, you know, when we're looking at the community as a whole, our job is to look at all edges of it and we often look at certain areas because that's where we're projected to grow soonest. But we, it's important that we not also, that we neglect other, we not neglect, sorry, other areas. I think this West Day project, in my mind, I would support it moving up in the priority list. I think the impact on development, the impact on safety of pedestrians, I think there's just several factors that make it compelling. So I certainly would urge the MPO to take a look at it and see if there's a way to make it happen a little bit sooner. But I plan to support Michael's motion.
Sure. I mean, I, I don't disagree with the comments made by Kathy and the concern of our lovely citizen that waited through all of us to come and testify about it. But the Planning Commission here is being asked whether the TIP is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. I think it is, and so I'm going to support the motion to find that it's in conformance.
I'm also going to support the motion, but I do commend Mr. Ankinson for coming up and sticking around and because I think that the fact that you came up here has shed some light on this that normally would not happen, so, good job. Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for finding of conformance, the Transportation Improvement Program. Beecham?
Yes.
Cornell, yes.
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Okay. Item 6.2 is comprehensive plan conformance number 16004 to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, the City of Lincoln's draft six-year capital improvements program for fiscal year 2016-17 to 2021 to 2022. Are there any? I'm sorry.
Paul, are you going a beard or is that just five o'clock shot?
In that time, yeah.
This really long meeting.
I was clean shaven this morning.
Staff recommendation is for full or general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any exportate communications to be disclosed on this agenda item?
Maya?
I have one. I spoke to Pet Leach, the library director, about how the library's CIP has changed specifically as it relates to the new main library and also how that relates to the standalone item in the CIP of the Pershing demolition that we as a commission voted on some time ago. And Paul could, if anyone's interested in that, how that relates, I'm sure Paul could address it.
Thank you. Paul?
Last agenda item. All right, good evening. Paul Barnes with the Planning Department. So before you, we have the draft six-year CIP. What I'd like to do is go ahead and just kind of describe what it is that you're going to be taking action on this evening and kind of the process moving forward. Then I will hit on some department highlights. We did have a Planning Commission briefing similar to this, but given the public hearing, I do want to hit on that important information as well. So this, this task to review the CIP for conformity with the comprehensive plan comes from the city charter. And the city charter says that no money can be appropriated by the City Council until each of those projects, capital projects, have been reviewed for conformance with the comprehensive plan. So what we do is we, we go through each of these projects with our departments and in their program. We look at what the policies are in the comprehensive plan. We look at the maps and the details. We look at adopted sub-area plans that may be adopted by reference in the comprehensive plan as well as utility and infrastructure plans. And we use those documents as our guides in determining that conformance which we have before you today. We will take your recommendation as well as any testimony and that will be presented to the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, which is comprised of the mayor, his staff, and representatives of Public Works and Planning. And we will take those recommendations to that group. They may make some changes and adjustments, but ultimately that's going to be forwarded on to the City Council as the capital budget to be adopted as the two-year budget. We know that this is a six-year document, but the first two years of that actually become the budget. Those years, three through six, are still significant, however. They do represent intention of programs or continued planning for those programs in the future. Lastly, we are having some discussion about the funding and the financing of these projects. Just to reiterate, we are looking at comprehensive plan conformance. So is this project in conformance with the plan? Is it in general conformance? But along the lines of funding, I just wanted to mention that in the schedule of GO bonds, which some of these projects are proposed to be funded with, those would have to be approved by the City Council separately. So outside of this budget process, they'd have to go back to the City Council and then, of course, on to a vote with the community. Just to touch base on what this conformance means, the city charter isn't as clear as to how we go about doing that. The city charter says that we need to gauge these projects in terms of their character and degree of conformity or non-conformity, and basically leaves it at that. So the planning staff, and I think with input from others, has come up with a four-tiered system to review these projects, one being in conformance with the plan, that meaning that this project could specifically be listed or pointed to at some point on a map in an exhibit or in text. Generally conforms with the plan is another tier. It may not be specifically called out, but it does meet the intent and have the overall policy conformance with the plan. The next tier is not included in the plan. Maybe there is no reference to this project. Maybe it's something that's new that we've recognized it needs to be included in the plan and maybe it's accompanied by a comp plan amendment. And then lastly, not in conformance with the plan. So this would be something that is against policies or really not in line with what's been adopted in those plans.
Will you just say them each again really fast?
In conformance with plan, generally conforms with plan, not included in the plan, not in conformance with the plan. And I will say the recommendations we have before you today, all of the projects are either in conformance or generally conform with the plan. So now we'll get into some department highlights and these are just going to follow in line with the way that they're set up in the hard copy CIP book. The first department we have to look at is Lincoln City Libraries. Just a couple of highlights that we wanted to hit on here, of course, is the proposal of the new Headquarters Library downtown. And included with that project would be an upgrading of various branch libraries, those being Anderson, Isley, and Walt. And then also a citywide project, which would be the RFID electronic card system. All of that would be together in one, one-years program. Just wanted to hit on a couple of items of history with the Downtown Library project. There has been in the CIP discussion or a project for a Headquarters Library downtown since 2006. In that year, it was shown as a $47.4 million project. Today, the costs that are included in this project do come mostly from a study that the Library Board had completed in 2012 and those costs were based on a specific site, which was the Pershing site. So that is referenced in the text of the project, but does not obligate that project to that site. What we're looking at here is, does a downtown Headquarters Library make sense and is it in conformance with the comprehensive plan? Not, is the Planning Commission going to approve a library at the Pershing site?
Paul, just to clarify, and that would necessitate a funding through the GO bonding?
Yes, so in terms of funding, the project proposes a combination of GO bonds and then some private financing. So the GO bond would have to go through, first, the CIP process and be approved by the council. Secondly, you'd have to come back and go to the council for the GO bond to be approved and then go out to a vote with the citizens.
The citizens would vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Just a couple of other critical projects that the library has demonstrated need for, and these would be funded with general revenue, are the South Branch parking lot, Bethany Branch roof, and Gear Branch HVAC systems. We did receive one opposition letter to the Downtown Library project. That letter is not opposed to a Downtown Library, but that person, that individual is opposed to reusing the Pershing site for the library. Moving on to LES, I just wanted to note here that LES by city ordinance is required to go through the comprehensive plan conformance process with the city's CIP, although they do follow a separate budget cycle. Their fiscal year begins January 1. Just so we have that out there. A couple of larger projects that they have included include the Laramie River Station power supply investment and then also the LES Operations Center, which is included in years one and two, and I believe that has prior appropriations as well. The Parks and Recreation Program, we do have a new project that's looking to address the oncoming Emerald Ash Bore situation. The Parks and Rec staff have estimated that project initially to cost upwards of $30 million for recovery and treatment of that on a citywide program. We know that it's not in the state yet, but it's probably more than likely on its way. They do propose to fund some of this, this project with GO bonds in years two and five that would be piggybacked with the watershed GO bond schedule. That would be $2 million each in those years to address the Emerald Ash Bore. Another new project in this program is the Cornhusker Highway Corridor Entryway Project. There was a committee that looked at the entryway corridors in the community and prioritized which should be considered our next project, and this was selected. And so this project would do some streetscape type of enhancements, entryway type features to enhance that corridor into the community. And then lastly...
Wait, I'm sorry, can you just address funding for that one?
I think this is an out-year project and I don't know if funding has been identified at this time.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
It's fine. Lastly, there's a GO bond proposed in year four. The Parks and Recreation Department has many other projects, capital improvement projects. Throughout the community, there's some community centers, there are paving projects, things like this that need to be continuously upgraded and enhanced. And so that's part of the GO bond request in year four, excuse me. Next, we have the Public Safety Program. This includes the Lincoln Police Department and Lincoln Fire and Rescue Departments, coordinated under the Public Safety Director. We do have GO bond requests shown in the out-years in year six. This would include two new fire stations and then a new LPD maintenance garage facility. Current facility on J Street is significantly deteriorated, does not meet needs, so they've included that in their program. Also to note, there have been four fire stations and LPD radio system upgrade that have been funded with the quarter cent sales tax and that's projected to end in year three of the proposed CIP. Moving on to Public Works, the first program we have is broadband infrastructure. Overall, what this program is doing is continuing their project to expand infrastructure for both public and private use. Looking at solid waste operations, there is a project at the Bluff Road landfill facility to expand the gas system and complete improvements for production of electrical energy. And then they're also looking at a couple of recycling projects. A couple in years one and three would be improvements to sites, so in increasing landscaping and enhancements to those sites. And then in years two and five, looking at new locations for additional drop-off locations. Onto Startran, they do have a program that is in coordination with another department with wastewater, but I'll mention it here as well. This is the Biogas Renewable Fueling Station. They are showing some funding in years one and two. What this would do is, from what I understand, the digesters at the Teresa Street Wastewater Treatment Facility are in need of replacement and so this is going to take that place. It's going to take the byproducts that are made at that facility and actually refine them and turn them into a gas that can be used in the city's fleet. And so wastewater has a piece of this, but the Startran piece is to actually put the fuel into fueling station and then distribute it to the city's fleet. They are proposing bus replacements, 17 of those in total in years 2018 to 2020. And they're also looking at a couple of other large projects, looking at a maintenance facility relocation. They're currently on J Street and with the new types of buses and the new fueling systems that they have, that facility's really aged and doesn't meet the needs of the fleet and ongoing into the future with new technology. They would maintain though that north garage in between the Rosa Parks viaducts. And then we also did touch on previously the multimodal center. Both of those projects would apply for and hopefully receive significant federal assistance. Lastly, with Startran, there is a new project to implement some design standards for new bus shelters. There is some interest in looking at how these shelters really fit into their location and their place and specifically downtown, looking at six locations where we could have a phase one of this project. Onto street maintenance and operations, there's a proposed project to enhance the brine protection facility on Baldwin Avenue and overall, looking at additional projects that would increase safety of other facilities and improve responsiveness to winter events. Onto streets and highways, we do have overlap of projects between the TIP and CIP and that's intentional because they need to coordinate together. Depending on the funding, we may not have all in both, but we do need to recognize that conformance between the two documents. Just to note on a couple of these projects, we are continuing the level of funding for sidewalk rehab at a million dollars per year. That's for maintenance and repair and that's in all years of the program. We do continue the pedestrian bicycle capital funding. This is the Complete Streets Committee that looks at gap analysis types of projects. The roadway and bridge rehab program is funded with approximately $40 million and then we are showing funded projects of Yankee Hill Road, West A, Pine Lake Road, South Beltway, and then the 14th, Worlick and Old Chaney intersection. Onto wastewater, just to note, kind of on the funding side of things, the utilities are assuming a 5% rate increase. Now that would have to be voted on separately during the budget process at the City Council, but that is assumed for years one through six. There are significant needs for repair and replacement of equipment and facilities and so there are funds tied to that to address that need. But there's also an emphasis with wastewater to meet the developer needs and those obligations through what we call the fire process, where we work with developers and property owners to see where they have proposed development on the edge of the community. So what we've, what we have proposed with the CIP is to support a couple of projects which would extend trunk sewer lines to allow for that development. Those would be in Stevens Creek, south of Holdridge, down to, south of A and then possibly over to 98th and Van Dorn. And then also in the Southwest Village area of Worlick and Highway 77 into the west. I do want to note in this conversation, though, that those areas are in Tier One Priority C. In the comprehensive plan, we talk about Priority C being those areas that would develop at 2025 and beyond. This is a little unique and I'll explain. The areas that we're talking about in Stevens Creek and in Southwest Village are appropriate, though, for these utilities, even though they're not in Priority B, because they are contiguous to the city limits and with utilities, they would be appropriate for annexation and residential or urban development. They are adjacent to Priority B, which is the next growth tier in. We do have landowner and developer interest in these areas, which is also outlined as criteria in the comp plan. We're also going through an update to the comp plan growth tier map and you have been briefed on that as well. So this is kind of going along the same lines with that process. The other thing is that no construction on these utilities would actually be budgeted for in the first two years. So going back to the city charter, we can't find that conformity on project or we can't do the project unless we find a conformity. These won't be constructed or worked on in those first two years. We are programming for them, though, in those out-years. I believe there is some design for Stevens Creek... I believe there is some design for Stevens Creek in that second year, but construction would be further out. So we do find a general conformance with those activities. And then, as I noted with Startran, wastewater does have a piece of the biogas renewable fuel station. They're actually going to collect the material, they're going to refine it and compress it, and that's their piece of the biogas facility. Moving on to the water supply and distribution, again, they're assuming the 5% rate increase. We also have an emphasis with meeting the developer obligations with this project, somewhat in tandem with that wastewater program that we just talked about. And they do have a program of $250,000 annually identified for economic development activities. We did receive a letter of support for the water main replacement program, noting that there is a significant need as our infrastructure ages, that that has been funded, and that individual does support that. Moving on to watershed management, again, they're looking at two geo-bonds, those would be in years two and five, and these would be to continue those activities that they normally do to help with localized flooding, help with stream bank erosion, maybe some projects in coordination with parks. And along those lines, those bonds would be coupled with that Emerald Ash Bore request for funding as well. Lastly, we have Urban Development Department. They are looking at some new parking meters. These would be multi-space meters downtown, as well as replacement of the coin meters. I guess there's still some of those left. They are proposing a new Parking Operations Command Center. This would transition from the cashier-based model and offer them some more efficiencies with their operations. They are looking at a new public parking garage, yet to be determined with the location. And then they're proposing some downtown and BID public improvements. So we find these activities in the CIP to be in full or general conformance with the comprehensive plan.
One thing, just, Paul, I asked you a question about, you talked about the different categories of, in conformance, general conformance, not in the plan, and I'd asked you how you came to the finding of general conformance as it relates to the Emerald Ash Bore, since it's not mentioned specifically in the comp plan. I just thought it was interesting what you said, so if you wouldn't mind sharing that with us.
I can share that, sure. So the Emerald Ash Bore situation is not specifically listed in the environmental section or other chapter in the comprehensive plan, but what we do know is that the Parks and Recreation Department is tasked with maintaining these facilities, which includes street trees and parks and those types of facilities. And so along those lines, it's the intention that they would maintain the street trees and the parks, including addressing the Emerald Ash Bore issue. We are going through the comp plan update, and we are including, are proposing to include text about that situation for resource for treatment and recovery of Emerald Ash Bore. If that were in there today, and it said that, we would say it is in compliance. Otherwise, it's in general compliance.
You would say in the plan?
Or it's in the plan, excuse me.
And this is in general conformance?
It's in general conformance because it's not, but it follows the intent of the department.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Kathy, did you have a question?
I think I'll wait until we hear from other staff, and then I'll ask it.
Anyone else? Thank you. All right. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item?
Good evening again. I was just about to order everyone pizza. My name's Kobe Mack, I'm here on behalf of the Lincoln Independent Business Association. Again, this is a very large document, this is almost two-
Give your address, I'm sorry. Could you give your address? I think we forgot.
620 North 48, Suite 205.
Go ahead.
This is an almost 200-page document. We still have a few questions out on a few different items. There are only two tonight that we would like to weigh in on. One is the city's further investment in the brine de-icing program, and I will put a photograph up on the OMO. Do I need to do anything? There it is. "The plan to construct a brine production facility and fully commit to this method of managing our winter weather, we think, may be premature. The project has only been in place for about two winter weather seasons. Lincoln has been conducting a study to determine whether this project has been successful. We are 22 weeks into this study. It's a two-and-a-half-year study, but yet this is in the CIP for next year to build this new $575,000 facility. Leba believes our plans to invest further in the brine program should be held until the results of the study are examined publicly, and there's a public discussion about investing in the program. This is particularly true in light of the city's intent to operate the venture as a private business by selling or distributing the formula. Frankly, the public should be given the opportunity to help determine whether this is inappropriate for the city to be using taxpayer dollars to compete with private enterprise in the area of research and development. Also, we recently approached the county engineer about why the county is not using brine. And after discussions, they said it just isn't quite as effective as the salt and sand that they are using. And we asked for further documentation on that, and what you see here in the lower part of the picture is maintained by the county, and I can slide it up a little bit. You will see what you have with salt and sand is a clear road, while the upper part of this road, by the way, this is 14th and Arbor Road looking south into the city, is maintained with brine. And so we just believe that we need to look further into this before making this kind of a commitment." The second item that I wanted to discuss with you tonight is the broad and very real impact of the inclusion of a $50 million library on the Pershing Center site. And to clarify one thing that staff just said, they said that the bonding of this, the geo-bonds, would be put to a vote of the city council, and while that's correct, there is also a second method for geo-bonding, and that is doing it by petition drive. In any event, in 2012, there was an RFP process undertaken by Mayor Beitler. With the help of a 12-member selection committee, they considered three proposals for reuse of Pershing Center. Two of the proposals from private developers looking to inject this area of downtown with a mix of retail, residential living, and office space. The third was an iteration of the library proposal that's included in the CIP draft before you today. Mayor Beitler rejected all three proposals, including the construction of the library on the Pershing Center site, concluding he didn't, and I quote, "sense community support for that kind of public expenditure at the time," end quote. Leba has repeatedly made clear its opposition that the Pershing Center site should be available for private development, recently calling on city officials to renew the effort to redevelop Pershing and issue a new RFP. We wholeheartedly agree with Mayor Beitler's belief when he said, and I quote, "The site is a prominent spot along the recently renovated Centennial Mall and is a good place for private development," end quote. Lincoln cannot afford to miss this opportunity to transform a full-city block, a prime downtown real estate, into a thriving hub of economic activity in central downtown. "To be responsible in planning for a bright future in Lincoln, the CIP and comp plan must be responsive to our core needs and must not foreclose opportunities for growing and development. Including this bond issue and identifying the Pershing Center site in the CIP as the intended location of a new downtown library could have the effect of discouraging private developers from giving serious consideration to the possibility for the site reuse." If I may, in closing, we believe this may even go so far as to provide city staff, may go so far as to provide city staff a basis for denying proposals from private developers because the CIP is now reserving the space for a library, or may allow staff to require private developers to include space for the library. And with that, I will conclude, and thank you for your time, and happy to try and answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this question, this item? Questions for staff, Paul? Yes?
And I'm not sure, actually, Paul, if it's you I want to hear from first, or Pat? Can, Pat, would you be willing to come up and? I bet you know what I'm going to ask you. Can you, can you address Kobe's comments and just in general downtown library, Pershing site, CIP? Just a little bit.
Yes, yes, I can. The Central Library project has been in the CIP since about 2006, so it's been there quite a while. The language of the current project, as described in the CIP for replacing Bennett Martin Library, includes the language that is, the library board is on record wanting Block 63 of Pershing Center as the location for a new central library. So the language there was chosen to indicate the library board's interest in that site. In particular, we realize that there are a variety of, that there is a variety of interest in the site potentially.
Okay.
And were there, were there other particular questions in regard to that?
I was just going to ask you very, very briefly to talk about why you think a downtown library is important to Lincoln.
Wow, we should order pizza.
Can you put that in three sentences or less?
Our ongoing, our ongoing sense of our system-wide responsibilities as far as libraries in Lincoln has been that we've developed a very strong branch program over the years. Isley and Walt Libraries are two newest ones, opening in 2002. In the course of that, we realized that the downtown library has lagged somewhat. We've been studying the question since 2003. At that time, indications were it was best to look elsewhere instead of planning for the long-term use of that building, and so instead of investing in that building, we've been making plans to go elsewhere. Have updated that information just recently. In general, what we see is libraries are changing significantly, and what we're looking at is, we know when most people hear libraries, they think books. What's going on in libraries now is more about people and how people relate to learning and literacy and literature, which looks a lot different. So we're thinking more about how do we plan space for people? People to engage with each other, with books, with information in a community way. So thinking a lot about a library as a community center that's based on books and based on literacy and promoting those things. So we've looked a lot to libraries in other cities, but we're committed to a great library for Lincoln. So we're looking at what Lincoln's needs are and how we would make this a real winning and successful project for Lincoln, and also seeing downtown as a real core part of our city, both in terms of the vitality of downtown, and also an important area of the city that's older and still needs infrastructure in terms of things like libraries.
Thanks.
Pat, would it be the board's intention that this would go before the public as a vote?
Yes, Chris. Our understanding is that the expectation is that as a geo-bond, it would go to a vote of the people. So yes, that is part of what our thinking is.
Thank you.
I had a question for Paul.
Janelle?
Paul, the brine project, is that in the two-year funded, or is it in the six-year outlook?
It's in the first year to be funded with other financing, meaning that through the budget process, that's still being looked at.
Roger Feiger, Public Works, again, just as Paul said, other funding, so it's not guaranteed to move ahead. That would have to be part of a dialogue to do that.
What's the status of the study?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what Kobe's referring to. This is our second full winter, and we're completely convinced that using pre-wetted salt and using the brine ahead of time has been a success. We've had about an 18% reduction in the chlorides that we put on over the last two years. We think our level of service is up. I can drive you anywhere in town in the country and find spots where you can find performance issues, but overall, we have been getting there a higher level of service for the same cost overall to the program with that reduction, but we're getting better action. And the biggest issue with this whole project and the reason, the reason that we brought it forward is, one, of timing and even improving service. Today, with the, with the facilities we have at the MSC, it takes 34 hours with that equipment to produce the brine for one event. So 34 hours ahead of an event, we need to know when it's coming and the temperature. By doing an additional one, we can cut that preparation time down to about half and be much more capable to react quicker to an unknown storm and event. So it's just, will allow us to be more effective and more efficient, and that payback would come back fairly quickly over time.
Is this brine process, I guess, friendlier to the long-term roads than salt and sand?
It isn't less friendlier, certainly, because our brine, we are, we are mixing it and using either calcium, using a chloride that is based on its, what the temperature range for the most effective melt. So what we have found and have been watching over the last two winters is we don't think that it's any more corrosive or degrades the pavement. Most of what people are seeing out there today is just the fact that we haven't been able to keep up with our preventative maintenance in the areas where we've had cracks and delamination in the concrete in those. In any freeze thaw cycle with lots of moisture, they're going to continue to degrade and to break out more quickly. So it's, it's really not the product and the de-icer, it's the overall conditioner of our pavement.
So you're not saying that there's any correlation between the potholes-
No.
-that we have now compared to-
No.
-the brine, or in using the brine?
Right.
Other questions? Maya?
To go back to the library CIP and Pershing, as it relates to the comprehensive plan, Pat and Paul, you can both weigh in on this, but if I, if I remember correctly, even though there's no mention of Pershing specifically in the comp plan as the, as a placeholder preferred site for the library, the comp plan has adopted the Downtown Master Plan, which does point to Pershing, whether you agree with it or not, but just in, in the sense of, does this conform to the comprehensive plan, which is the only thing that we're supposed to do here today? The discussion of where it goes should be vigorously debated, but in terms of conformance with the comprehensive plan, you, can you argue that the Pershing reference is in conformance?
There is a reference to the Central Library on the Pershing site in the, in the current Downtown Master Plan. The wording is, "The framework reflects the preferred relocation of the downtown Bennett Martin Public Library to the current Pershing Auditorium site as the library board recommends." Within the comprehensive plan, the language is a little bit more gentle as far as downtown, but it is included in the Downtown Master Plan.
But overall, the comprehensive plan does note the importance of the library system and does support, you know, the headquarters' library, which, given those points, is why you see on that program, it's in conformance with the plan, not general conformance. Regardless of the site-specific, a downtown library is in conformance with the plan.
Right.
Paul, then just playing devil's advocate, if for some reason the geo-bond vote comes about and the public doesn't approve it, then what happens if it's in the CIP and-
Right. We've talked about that, and we've actually noted part of that in, in the project for the replacement of the headquarters' library, because there are deficiencies in that facility that need to be taken care of. If that new facility isn't built, then those actually need to happen. So things like upgrading the heating and cooling system and looking at the carpet replacement projects, those are noted in the CIP and are still part of that comp plan conformance process. So if the geo-bond were to fail, those would go forward at another time through that process.
And then would that land then be put on, put up for sale, or what would-
With the Pershing site or?
Yeah, the Pershing site.
Well, now, it's been noted that there's an IFRP still out. You know, proposals are still being accepted, nothing's been finalized there, so, you know, decisions haven't been made about that site.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding Parks, and I know JJ had to leave, and David, I think he gave you his notes, is that right? So we'll call you JJ for the next-
JJ Yost, the Parks-
JJ Yost, the Parks Department?
Can you just talk to me in general? I believe the Parks Department has put together a ten-year facilities plan, and this is just as I understand it, what we need to maintain what we have, to keep our roofs on our bathrooms, to keep our play equipment safe, just maintaining. Can you give us the number on that ten-year plan?
Yeah, they, they have an annual funding need based on that ten-year plan of two-point-eight-eight million, or approximately just under thirty million dollars over that time period.
So an annual funding need of two-point-eight million? And can you tell us, I know they get keynote funds and cell tower, which gives them a certain amount, and then there's a gap?
Right. Yeah, they, between the keynote funding and the cell tower lease revenue that they do get on an annual basis, that, that approximates about one and a half million, so they're about one-point-three million dollars short from meeting all those needs that they've identified in that ten-year plan.
Okay. And we are funding them, how much in our CIP right now?
In the CIP as proposed, as it's laid out, a combination of getting general revenue funds on an annual basis, as well as, as Paul referenced, the quality-of-life bond issue in the Parks Program in Year Three, which is a nine-point-eight million dollar proposed bond issue, which, again, would have to go up for a vote of the people. But those combined fill that gap, and that's why it's so important for them to kind of lay this out, so that we identify what the needs are-
Right.
...and try to get funding to meet those needs.
Because right, right, in our current CIP, we have, what, seven, seven thousand in there for the, for parks? I'm trying to remember the number that we were looking at.
For what parks?
I, I'm concerned that we are not, we're not funding enough for this maintenance, and I know we have an issue with a lot of this about, we're, we're planning on this bond and that bond, and it concerns me greatly, and, and general funds as well. We have not traditionally had much money go to parks at all in our general funds in the last few years. And so I'm just wanting to, to point that out as in part of my comments, because, you know, we're just talking about maintenance right now, and, and we have a big need, and I don't feel like we're, you know, I feel like we're, we're not funding them the way that we need to, so, thank you for those numbers.
Sure. Is that it?
Anyone else? Thank you. How would entertain a motion?
Move conformance with the, finding that it's in conformance with comprehensive plan.
Second.
Discussion.
Harris.
Well, I'll make another comment, since I was just on my Parks comment card.
Go box.
And since this is probably my last CIP, I will take, I will coin Michael's phrase and say, I'm just going to get on my high, high horse a little bit. I think that the state of our parks funding is really, really critical, and I would also say the state of our tree, our street tree funding is really critical. I don't think this is just a quality-of-life issue. You know, we, we work a lot with millennials, and if you look at the studies of millennials, what they are looking for, they want green spaces. That, that is what helps attract them to a city. So it is not just about neighborhoods wanting this. It, in my opinion, it is how we market our city to, to young people wanting to come and start businesses here. You know, talking about our street trees, if we look at our funding since ninety-eight, since ninety-eight, we have removed almost fifty thousand street trees, fifty thousand street trees, and we have funded replacement of just over fifteen thousand. And that is before we get hit with Emerald Ashbore. And, you know, trees are something that are easy to push off, because we can make the decision not to fund it today, and it's really my kids who are going to see the impact. But I think that we are in a position that we really need to seriously look at putting some money into that. I think it's a critical piece of marketing Lincoln to businesses. I think it's a critical piece of the folks who live here, and, and I just don't think that we're doing enough. And I would say the same thing about our parks. Our parks have, have, we're to the point that we're pulling playground equipment in parks in poor areas of our community, and I think that is not okay. I, I absolutely realize it's easy to ignore a park, because not everybody sees it when they drive by, but I think they, you know, I think the presentation we had said eighty, almost eighty-five percent of our citizens live within a half a block of a park, and I think ninety-five percent within a trail, I'm close on my numbers. But I, I just want to make the plug in my comments that, to our city leaders who are going to be finding funding for this, I think for way too long, we have not been funding our parks and our trees, and I think it's really, really critical, not just to neighborhoods, but to businesses, that we find some money and really take care of that. They are an important part of our infrastructure, so there's my two cents.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? I think we're all tired.
Sorry.
I'm going to support the motion. I appreciate the comments that Kobe made about the brine de-icing, and I hope that the studies continue on that. And obviously, the, the library issue is something that will go before the people, and we can decide it at that point.
Cherry, please call the vote.
This is for finding of conformance for the capital improvement program. Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelia, yes?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I want to thank everybody for their patience tonight. It's been a long evening, a long day.
Thanks, staff, for hanging in there.
Appreciate all the work on the staff at this point. Anyone wishing to speak on an item not on an agenda may do so, or adjourn.